Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Temple City Council for June 7th of 2012. Please rise. Chief Kerry Smith will lead us in invocation. And this is a great day in Temple. We've had two groundbreakings today. Spare time entertainment with Travis Middle School, and we've gotten wonderful rains. And so Chief, give us blessings.
Please bow and let's pray. Good gracious Father, we are thankful for an opportunity to gather today. And Lord, we are thankful for your love for us and your unfailing grace and forgiveness of our sins. Heavenly Father, we're thankful for the many, many blessings that you have bestowed upon us, and we're thankful for the rain that nourishes our land. Lord, we'd ask your presence here today to guide us in our speech before the council. Lord, we'd ask the council to be guided by you and that their decisions be pleasing unto you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Ken Skorlop, Parsons Leadership Services Director, will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Ken?
Please join with me. Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Ken. Again, welcome. Glad to have all of you with us. We've got four Boy Scouts here with us tonight. We appreciate it and always enjoy having the Scouts come to City Hall and participate in your local government. Thanks very much. Hope you find it entertaining, enjoyable, and informative all in the same time. First item on our agenda this evening is public hearing. It's the presentation of the proposed Community Development Block Grant 2012 to 2013 Action Plan and Budget, including the funding recommendations for public service agencies from the Community Services Advisory Board. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mayor. I am pleased to present to you tonight the proposed annual action plan for our city's Community Development Block Grant program. This plan is for the CDVG program year 12, which coincides with the city's fiscal year 2013. Our annual action plan is the document that contains the recommended funding allocations for projects under the CDVG program. The City of Temple expects to receive $386,943 for its 2012 CDVG allocation. This does reflect a 17.1% reduction in funding from 2011, and also a 16.6 reduction from the past year for a two-year reduction of 30.9%. And as you can see from the graph, that is consistent with the trend that we've seen over the past 12 years of declining funding from this federal program. To put that in perspective for you, this chart shows you the allocations for all entitlement communities within the state of Texas. The state has allocated just under $156 million for CDVG programs. The smallest grant amount awarded this year is $185,000, and the largest is just over $24 million, with the average being $2.5 million. So the City of Temple's $386,943 is far from the max and also quite a bit below the average. As part of the development process for the proposed action plan that's before you, we held three public meetings where we received citizen comments on the plan. Those were scheduled and held for February 15th, 23rd, and March 6th. Generally, the comments that we heard from those meetings were disappointment in the level of funding and how that's declined, appreciation for the city's transition to in-house administration, and the desire to stay the course with the First Street Sidewalk project that we began a couple of years ago, and also investigating the future opportunities for a similar project along 24th Street, and also the desire to stay the course with our demolition program, which has been ongoing as part of our CDVG program for quite some time. The 2012 proposed allocation of funds is as follows: $192,757 for infrastructure, $54,000 for public services, $85,000 for demolition, and $55,186 for administration. I'll go through each of those individually. As council will recall, in this current fiscal year, the city transitioned the administration of the CDVG program back in-house. It was previously contracted out. We did this to maximize the funding available for projects, and we have been successful with that. Our allocation, our proposed allocation of $55,186 represents only 14% of the total allocation that we will receive this year. And as you can tell from the graph, that is both the lowest dollar amount and lowest percentage of total allocation that we have seen in quite some time. So we are pleased with the progress for that. $85,000 is proposed for the demolition program. This is a program that eliminates dilapidated and vacant structures to address life in the community. The consolidated plan did recommend and did propose a $100,000 funding level, but because of our funding reductions, we were only able to propose $85,000 in our annual action plan. The picture shows some of the recent work done through that program this current year. For our public services, we have $54,000 available. Your Community Services Advisory Board worked very hard this year in evaluating the applications that were received and in presenting these recommendations to you tonight. Their recommended award amounts are $15,000 for the Bell County Human Services Childcare Program, $10,000 for Families in Crisis, $15 for the Family Promise Program, and $14,000 for the Hill Country Community Action Association Meals on Wheels Program, for a total of The infrastructure project that is proposed this year is to the continuation of the First Street Sidewalk project in the amount of $192,757. This is the third year of a multi-year project. Plan year 2010, which was our fiscal year 2011, included funding for the total project design. This current fiscal year included funding for the first phase of construction, and we are recommending the second phase of construction be funded in next year's plan. The project is located along South First Street from Avenue F to Avenue M. It involves the installation of eight-foot wide sidewalks and landscaping. Phase one construction is expected to begin late summer or early fall, so we should be seeing some progress with this project shortly. I also wanted to provide you an update on some of the projects that we have funded in this current year or in the past year. Our ramp project, which is our residential accessibility project, is going well. We have assisted or in the process of assisting 14 homeowners with ramps or other accessibility improvements to their homes. The Clarence Martin gym floor has been installed and is substantially complete, and you can see a photo of that. It looks very good. And the Avenue H resurface project is complete. The action plan is scheduled for this year. As I mentioned, in February and March of this current year, we held citizen meetings and we received comments on potential projects. Tonight, we are presenting the proposed action plan to you, and we will be holding a public hearing. Tomorrow through July 9th, we will have our 30-day public comment period where we will receive comments on the proposed plan. We plan to bring the plan back to you on July 19th for adoption, and we are required to submit an adopted action plan to HUD by August 15th, and the plan will go into effect on October 1st. Again, in summary, we have $192,757 proposed for infrastructure, which is the First Street Sidewalk project, $54,000 for public service agencies, $85,000 for demolition, and $55,186 for administration, which totals our entire allocation of $386,943. The plan is available on the city's website for public to review, and we will be accepting comments during our public comment period over the next 30 days. Are we happy to answer any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Nice presentation. Council, questions on the plan? No? Again, requires no action tonight, but we are posted for a public hearing. This will be the first phase. We'll go into public hearing, so if there are no questions from council, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak before the council on this particular item, the presentation of the Community Development Block Grant, the 2012 to 2013 Action Plan and Budget, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your Mr. Reynolds, can I comment? If you step up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, sir. Be glad to receive your comments. Thank you, sir.
I don't know what specific...
Could you just state your name and address for the record?
My name is Edward Lerner, and I live out in the country toward Florida. But I did live here in Temple for 75 years, and I still consider myself a citizen.
We consider you a citizen as well.
Okay. Well, like I was about to say, I don't know what topic that I'm going to speak in of the grant, but my comment is I've been trying to get the 600 block of Sixth Street updated for about three years. Everybody's been out there, from the superintendent to Mr. Henderson to... I don't know if you've been out there yet, but all the other administrators have been out there, and they said, "Oh, you can still drive over this baby." It looks like a drain, and a lady bought a house that was built around 1900, I guess, more or less, and she paid, this is just a ballpark figure, around $48,000. She lost about $20,000 with the first contractor, and she's already, she told me she's already put $50,000 more into it, and it's on the corner of Sixth and Avenue G. Anybody like to go by there? But she's making it so it'll kind of look like the church property, because she's going to give it to them eventually. It's going to belong to the church. And that house looks really beautiful, but the street still looks the same before and after. The house don't, and it says blighted conditions inside there. And there's three vacant houses on the end of that block that's been vacant for, I don't know. That seems like that might come under blighted conditions. And a while back, I just know what I read in the paper, that said that you're going to have to add some kind of grant for blighted conditions. And it wasn't the next day, but very soon after, I read that y'all throw down a barn over there, and that's the Martha's Grill. And I don't really think that that neighborhood is a blighted condition, blighted part of town. And it seems like none of the grants go past First Street. I'm sure some of them do, but I look at that all the time, and it seems like they go up north, go up down south, afraid to cross that First Street. If you go over that viaduct there, whatever you want to call it, or the Santa Fe and the Katy House there, if you just cross that, if you look both ways, you'll see a lot of blighted conditions. And it seems like they're not ever, you know, after these grants come up with blighted conditions, I never see what's going on there. That's one thing that concerns me. And I love Scott and White and all of the Scott and White hospitals, and I especially love the Santa Fe Hospital, because I think it's been there the longest. Right now, as soon as the foliage starts coming out, there's limbs from about 13th Street to the hospital. You can't even see the hospital. And I've been trying to get those limbs cut by different agencies, and they're either too big, too long, too high, too tall, and they just don't meet the criteria of cutting those so everybody could see that hospital the way they used to be seen. Avenue G, I think, to me is a historic street, because I think it was a street out of town, out of Temple. Came in on 15th, came downtown, and then went to Avenue G, to 25th, and went over one block, and went to where the overpass is now. It used to be Highway 81, and that's the highway that came in on the north and went out on south and went to Austin. You have to run the fastest through all of the towns like you used to on other highways. There used to be about 40 businesses between 25th and First Street, about four or five, I think it was about six service stations, two flower shops. And there used to be a guy had a car lot there. His name was Ted Cunnell. He used to have a shop there on about 15th. I mean, a used car lot. Another building that I remember, I don't know if any of y'all remember Ben Franklin. It was like, whoa, it used to be down there on Seventh Street, where Martha's Kitchen is kind of. And had a nice cafe in there. There was a real big, I think it was a Christian church there on Fifth Street or Seventh Street, and I think it burned, and they moved somewhere else. But there were a lot of buildings there, and to me, that was historic, just like any other place that's been here, just because there's nothing there now. I don't think that, you know, if you just came to town 20 years ago, that's like a newcomer, you wouldn't know all that history. But I was born here, and I walked that street many a time. It is a little good, and it can still be.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We'll look at Sixth Street, and if there are blighted homes there, then they can certainly be looked at as candidates for demolition and tell that there are plenty of opportunities in our community to do that, but we'll look at those. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anyone else wish to speak before the council on the CDVG budget? Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. And again, it requires no action. Do we have any of the members of the Community Services Committee here this evening?
No, sir.
All right. Well, we've got a committee of community citizens that are members of the Community Services Advisory Board that spend a tremendous amount of time hearing presentations. Ms. Lois Whitely is the one who conducts those hearings and has those committees and has that committee, and so we appreciate that very much, and they're under the direction of Glenn Reynolds. So thank you very much for bringing this report this evening and getting this process underway officially at the council level. It's been underway for quite some time at the board level, so thanks to them for their work. Next opportunity is public comments. Our next item on our agenda is an opportunity for public comment. Citizens who desire to address the council on any item may sign up to do so prior to the meeting. No public comments. The public comments will be received during this portion of the meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes. No discussion or final action will be taken as a result of your comments at this meeting. And I have Mr. Kyle Wilkerson signed up to speak this evening. Mr. Wilkerson? Yes, please, if you'll come to the podium. And again, just state your name and your address for us, please, and make your comments. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Kyle Wilkerson, 806 South Third.
Thank you, sir.
Like I said, I own the property at 806 South Third and been over there scraping and cleaning for the past few years, making some good progress. The City of Temple has made some beautiful progress. Martha's Kitchen has been poor down, and I've noticed lots of efforts been made on Avenue G to clean that area up. The problem I have is that they've moved the feeding station, the old Martha's Kitchen, to South Third and Avenue G. That's very close proximity to 806 South Third, and we have a problem. If you drive by there 9:00 or 9:30 in the morning, there's a line forming at the door. It goes around the corner of the building. They feed them at 11:30 or so, and then there's loitering and people hanging out until like 2:00 in the afternoon. And I feel threatened and unsafe. I don't think the conditions over there are conducive to this. We've got that many people lined up out there. Where are they going to the bathroom? Where are they washing their hands? The amount of trash that's developing from this activity is starting to accumulate everywhere in the radios around that. The amount of pedestrian traffic that I'm witnessing has increased dramatically in the past few months. There's panhandling going on. I own private property, and people have no problem. I mean, it's new traffic that I've noticed. And I just don't think it's safe, or it's not what we're trying to do with our beautiful city here. And I've tried to make contact with the Salvation Army and have not had very good results with that at all. Anyway, you understand my problems. Y'all heard about it before, I'm sure, and if you just drive through that area at any time of the day, you can witness it. All we did was move the problem up the street two blocks. The same people, same problem. And like the gentleman said before, that's a very historic part of Temple. It's a very old part of Temple, and I hate to see this going on there, because I love this town. And while I was thinking about coming up here, on a comical note, we've got the brand-new visitors center. These people are obviously visitors. They're homeless, so they must be visitors. We've got modern plumbing facilities. We've got a big parking lot. Let's just bring the Salvation Army chow wagon up here and feed them here. That's a joke. I'm just trying to make a point. I just would like any help that I can get to, let's get this new Salvation Army built, but we've got to control what's going on over there, because I cannot justify someone standing in line at 9:30 in the morning to get a meal and then hanging out until 2:00. I work hard all day long, every day, and it just, it makes me sick. Temple used to have a slogan, "Let's Keep Temple Beautiful." And any of the help y'all can give me would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkerson. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed in this section, consent are considerably routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and it will be considered separate. Council, this is item A for A through H. I understand we are going to pull item C for consideration separately. And are there any other items that you wish to remove from consent? And if not, I'll entertain a motion for items 4A through H less item 4C. Motion to approve. Second. Motion is second. Is there further discussion? There being none. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Cloud?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Item 4C is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the following. One is to release McLean Company from the lease on hangars 21 and 22, scheduled to expire May 17th of 2014, due to completion and relocation to their large corporate hangar under separate land lease, approved in 2011, effective June 30th of 2012. And item two is an amendment to extend the lease on Hangar 19, scheduled to expire May 17th of 2014 through May 17th of 2024, between McLean Company and the City of Temple at the Drawn Miller Central Texas Regional Airport. I understand that that item is, needs to be reworked or is still being worked, and so what I'm ready to be considered?
Bring that back to the next meeting. There's just a name change on the lease for the tenant. Rest of the provisions remain the same, but we need to change the name.
Okay, great. We'll do that. We'll table this item. If it's council's pleasure, we'll entertain a motion to table item 4C.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. If there's no further discussion, Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Cloud?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pierce, welcome back.
Only back for a moment. I'll be officially back in July, but thank you, Mayor.
We're going to work you hard tonight.
I think that was the intent to work me back up to it.
All right, good. This is item five. We have a number of public hearings and zoning cases and items requiring public hearing, and it's great to see you back. Hope all's going well.
Thanks, sir.
Item five is a first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning from agricultural district to general retail district on 2.75 acre tracts of land situated in the John Simmons survey, A737, Bell County, Texas, located at 5412 North, State Highway 317. Ms. Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This request is for the general retail district on, for the use of an existing single-family home. The applicant's intent is to allow office and retail uses. It is on 317, which is primarily residential at this point, as you can see by adjacent zoning in the area. It's currently zoned ag. These are the residential properties surrounding the use. The general retail would allow some non-residential uses that are not currently allowed, such as the retail or the office use, bank, restaurants, those types of uses. Prohibited uses in general retail would be apartments or triplexes. Also, more intense building materials sales and welding shops, those types of uses would not be permitted under the general retail use. The development standards would apply as to many of the cases tonight. When using an existing piece of property, there are certain requirements that are required to change the use. In this case, buffering between any single-family adjacent properties, parking and loading is required, access, driving, pavement circulation required, and then any type of permits that may be applicable in the future, such as building permits, signs, sidewalks may be triggered as well. This is the future land use map. This property is suburban commercial, and while many of the properties adjacent to this and across the street are single-family at this time, this is slated for future commercial development, far future perhaps, along 317. Just to look at the utilities in the area, there are adequate utilities to serve the property. This is the notification map. We mailed out eight notifications. We did receive one in agreeance and two in disapproval, as noticed on the map. Staff recommends approval of this request. It does comply with the future land use map. There are adequate facilities, and it does comply with the authority plan. The planning and zoning made a positive recommendation, 8-0, on its meeting at May 7th. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. And it's currently ag, because any property we bring into the city, when it's annexed in, all comes in as ag.
It comes in as agriculture.
Then they need to rezonate up until this point.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, great. Any other questions?
Could you run the, back to the beginning of the presentation as to what can, what's okay to begin with? Thanks.
And this is not an inclusive list. It's just a sample.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions, Mr. Wilson? If not, this item is supposed for a public hearing, and I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak before the council on this zoning change request, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments.
I'm going to leave now. I just want to tell you all, thank you all, council and all of the staff for being able to come.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. It's always good to have you here, Ms. Wilson. Thank you very much. It's a patsy for us. We're still mad at you for taking her out of Temple. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on first reading of this requested rezoning. Council, your pleasure on first reading of this requested rezoning.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion is second. Any further discussion, our council? There being none, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Item six is a first reading in a public hearing. Consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning from single-family to two district to a single-family three district on lots 12 and 13, Block 9, Carriage House Village, Phase 1, located at 1917 at 1921 Carriage House Village Drive. Ms. Spears.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This request is for two platted lots. They are currently platted with a bulb in the front of them, which existing utilities have been placed on. In the original plat, this was proposed to be a dead end to the north, and the revised plat allows a street through, essentially. And so the request is not to change the use, but rather the front yard setback. The SF2 requires a 25-foot front yard setback, and SF3 would allow a 15-foot front yard setback. The only other alternative we have to address this is a variance, and there is no hardship other than the self-imposed hardship of the plating. So this is the route really to go to correct this. This is just a look at the property so that you can see, the road extending to the north really changed how these lots were going to behave to the north and the south with the adjacent properties. And originally, we thought that we could replat it and take in that property, but the utilities have been placed in there. The surrounding property is a single-family residential, the same character that will be placed on these lots, an undeveloped land. This is just a look at the street plan. There's no trails proposed in this area. It's auto-urban residential, which it meets. Adequate utilities have been installed. The only difference, SF2 and SF3 would allow townhomes and patio homes. However, the applicant has stated that he plans to intend, plans to build as he has in the rest of the subdivision, in the setback. We sent out 10 notices. We received one in opposition. Staff recommendation was for approval. The request, even though it's increasing in density a bit, it does remain and complies with the future land use plan. It complies with thoroughfare plan, and adequate public facilities are available. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of 7 to 0 on its meeting on May 7. The applicant is here, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Spears. The one lot that had the denial, is there a home on that now? I know the aerial view doesn't show a home, but is there currently a home there?
The applicant may be able to help you with this. Mr. Pilkington, is there a home been built on this?
Sure, absolutely. If you can ask that. Thank you. I'm not sure it says.
It's just a...
2007.
It's two lots south.
Opposite side of the house that's next door to the two lots.
This one with the D.
Is there a home there now?
There's, I believe that lot, there's a home currently being built there.
Okay.
And I'll, this is a hearing open, I need to say my name and subject.
Oh, sure. Go ahead, if you don't mind.
Mike Pilkington, 8352 Poison Oak Road. This little area, original intention, I was gonna have a little entry feature there. We got out there building it, it just didn't work out and look right, but the utilities were already ran around the easement that follows the little blowout. So now it would just look like the houses were sitting 50 feet off the road instead of being aligned with the other houses. I'd say the only differences in the zoning are the size of the lot and the depth of the lot, and then the setbacks, I believe. And the lots are there, I'm not gonna change the size of them. I'm not building anything with single-family homes there. It's, that's what's all around it, and that's what's planned on going on the next phase. It's also, already zoned SF2. So this will just pull the houses. They'll look actually really strange if they're not pulled forward, so I'm just trying to make it fit a little bit better here, so I'm not trying to do any oddball things there at all.
Okay, looks like it makes sense. Any other questions for Mr. Pilkington, from council?
Thank you.
Thank you. I hadn't opened the public hearing, but it wasn't necessarily you, the applicant, and you were responding to a question, so at this time I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak before the council on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments on this zoning change. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on first reading.
I'll leave for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion, there being none, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Pilkington. Item seven, first reading in a public hearing. Consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning from single-family one district to office one district on approximately a half-acre tract of land out of the Maximo Moreno survey, abstract number 14, Bell County, Texas, located at 3606 South Fifth Street. Ms. Spears.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this one is much like our first one. This is an existing residential property that the applicant intends to use for a psychology office. No additional changes are planned at this time. The applicant has been made aware of any triggered development standards. This is just an aerial view that shows you the site, and the surrounding zoning is predominantly single-family one. Some pictures of the property, some vacant land, and then some residential properties. They'll look at the utilities, and there are adequate utilities in the area. Future land use for this area is suburban commercial. This request does comply with that. The O1 purpose and allowed uses, it's essentially a transitional zone. It's supposed to be located at convenient residential areas, so this does provide a positive buffer for the residential areas in vicinity of this. The uses, some of the uses that could be allowed are office, preschools, banks, studios, so no restaurants or things of that nature. The development standards that would be required, or buffering, would be required on three sides for this particular property. Parking and loading has to meet requirements. And then any additional signs or improvements that the applicant intends to make in the future would also have to comply with non-residential standards. We sent out four notices. We received one in favor and one in opposition. Staff made a positive recommendation because the request does comply with the future land use plan, the thoroughfare plan, and there are adequate public facilities available. The Planning and Zoning Commission made a positive recommendation, 8-0, on its meeting on May 7. However, they recommended that the property be rezoned to a planned development O1 to exclude the duplex use in the area. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about this case.
Thank you, Ms. Spears. Council, any questions? The recommendation from P&amp;Z, is from P&amp;Z, but staff's recommending the application as presented, just a straight O1.
Yes, sir.
Is there two more restrictive or less restrictive than O1?
Less restrictive, as far as uses.
Yep. Any other questions from council? There being none, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak before the council on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your comment. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure, item seven, rezoning on this item.
Make a, let's first.
Make a motion for approval.
For the...
For the recommendation.
Of the city recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion is second for, to approve this rezoning as recommended by staff and as requested to be rezoned office one. Is the further discussion or comment? There being none, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Item eight is a first reading in a public hearing. Consider adopting an ordinance, amending ordinance number 2011-4493, originally approved December the 15th of 2011. It's a conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption with more than 75% of revenue from alcohol sales in an existing bar to reduce the number of security lights from three to two on portions of Lot 11 and 12, Block 22, Original Town Edition, located at 11 East Central Avenue. Ms. Spears.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The agenda pretty much stated what this conditional use permit amendment is for. The original request was approved in December. It was approved with three wall pack units on the alleyway wall. The applicant has had some discussion with an electrician and has decided to request only installing two lights on that area. This is the particular alley in question. This is the property where the lights will be installed. They did make a request to change that. We did have to send out new notice letters. We sent out four. We did receive two positive notice letters in response to this amended conditional use permit. Staff did recommend, after reviewing the applicant's response letter from their electrician, staff recommended approval of the amendment, took this forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they recommended approval of the amendment as well on May 7, 8 to 0. The applicant is here if you have any questions of him, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Spears. What was the driver, if you could come up here, and what was the, is there a cost issue, electrical reason to just go with two instead of the three?
Name? My name is Ryan Leschker. I live at 120 South First Street in downtown Temple.
Thank you, Mr. Leschker.
Owner of Lebron's Irish Pub. The background on this is the reason we're requesting to go to two lights. Basically, the first recommendation was not, did not take into accounts and variables that the electrician brought up later, mainly technology, LED technology, things of this nature, because the wall packs aren't that. They also took in, did not take into account the actual existing lighting that's already there, the Blackstone Street, and also the, if y'all know the little alley that we're talking about, it's the alley that goes into the little hidden parking lot, right there between Casburg and Moon Ballroom. Basically, the area that's actually dark is about a 20 by 25-foot space, right about here. And all the security lighting that's in the parking lot is already lighting that back part in the street. Can't see the street light, but there's actually a, well, on the sidewalk, there's actually a street light. Basically, the electrician recommended that if we do three light packs, I mean, it's gonna be daylight versus, you know, I mean, it's completely overkill. So that was also a consideration. Read off my notes here. Also, just, you know, consideration of lumens, you know, LEDs, the actual space versus what was, because they were lighting our entire building, which our building goes into that secured lighting parking lot, so that was, that's why we wanted to...
I just remembered some issue relating to the lighting, didn't remember the particulars of it when we heard the CUP request, and it may have been to add lighting, period.
Yeah.
And so, I was just curious, you know, if there was something there that was contrary to what we did when we approved the CUP. So anyways, that's great. It's just different lighting technology, and you're indicating there's plenty of light, your electrician says you're gonna turn it into daylight if you put in three, so that's great. That's fine. Thanks, Mr. Leschker. Appreciate it. Any other questions? This item requires a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing over at this time. Anyone wishing to speak before the council on this CUP, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure, item eight. Item eight, relative to the CUP.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second for approval. No further questions, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Item nine is a first reading in a public hearing. Consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning from agricultural district to neighborhood service district on approximately three acres of land, and from agriculture district to urban estates district on approximately 7.04 acres of land, both being part of the Redding-Roberts survey, abstract number 692, in the City of Temple, Bell County, Texas, located on the east side of South 31st Street, south of Fox Glen Lane, and north of Venice Parkway. Ms. Spears.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant is seeking these zoning changes to continue on with the second phase, the next phase of DeAntoni's Crossing. This is adjacent to the residential phase, the initial residential phase to the south. The applicant actually came in to go through the plating exercise, and we discovered that he had not completed this zoning request, so we brought it back for this. This is just a look at the current zoning and the property that's surrounding it. North, single-family one, south, a single-family three, and then, of course, you can see the agricultural property along South 31st Street and the agricultural property that's going to urban estates on the east side. Surrounding property's residential and undeveloped land, additional residential and undeveloped land. The utilities are in place. There have been some trail waivers that were already received with previous plating exercises on the east portion. Six-foot wide sidewalk is required with the plat on the South 31st adjacent side property. This is a look at the future land use plan. It's suburban residential. This rezoning request meets the intent of that. Utilities are in place. This is a look at some of the purpose and allowed uses of neighborhood services. You can do childcare, office, convenience store without fuel, florist, some alcohol beverage sales with that convenience store, pharmacy florist, and it's intended to provide services to those adjacent residential properties. The urban estates is essentially just a smaller version of the agricultural lot. The lot size has decreased from one acre to 22,500, and the minimum lot width is 80 feet rather than 100 feet. Its purpose is to accommodate large estate-type residential properties. We sent out 30 notices. We received four in favor, five in opposition.
What is U-D?
Undetermined comments.
Did you send it back unmarked or something?
I just made that up, so I think that's what it means. I've never seen U-D, sorry.
Okay.
But I think that's what it means. We do get some of those sometimes.
Bet you got two of them.
Some of the concerns that were expressed in those notices were decreased property values, noise, some buffering. We received a request for an eight-foot fence to be installed at the urban, the neighborhood services area, and the existing trees to be managed. Staff recommended approval of both of the changes on this property. It does meet the intent of the future land use plan. It complies with the thoroughfare plan and trails plan. Adequate public facilities are available. And staff does support the neighborhood services because it does have frontage on South 31st Street. Planning and zoning commission made a recommendation in favor, 8 to 0, on May 7, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
This is consistent with what he did before on the neighborhood service portion. He had a portion of his plat that was neighborhood service, and then the bulk of it was urban states.
I believe so, yes, sir.
Okay. There being none, this item requires a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak before the council on this zoning change request, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on first reading.
Make a motion for approval.
Motion is second for approval of the zoning change. There vote for the discussion, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Item 10 is a first reading in a public hearing. Consider adopting an ordinance authorizing rezoning from two-family dwelling district to a general retail district on Lot 1, Block 15 of the Freeman Heights Edition, located at 101 South 31st Street in Temple. Ms. Spears.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You can see I was busy right before I left.
You were, indeed.
This particular case is a request to utilize an existing structure on 31st Street. The applicant has been advised of triggered development standards, as we heard similar earlier tonight. This is a look at the adjacent zoning. There's general retail to the north, south, and west of the property. There's some two-family to the east of the property, off of South 31st Street. Just a look at what's in the area around the property. Commercial uses predominantly. This is the trails plan. There is a proposed community-wide connector trail at the back of the property that won't be triggered with this property unless a specific amount of additions are proposed. Future land use plan shows this is auto-urban commercial. It does comply with that. Adequate utilities in the area to serve the property. General retail allowed uses, office, retail, car wash, fuel sales, some on-premise consumption of beer and wine, plumbing... of beer and wine, plumbing shop, and residential uses are permitted. The development standards that would be triggered are the buffering, parking and loading requirements, access, circulation, and driveway approach, in the future will be required to look at signs or sidewalk, or perhaps masonry requirements if additions are made. We sent out 17 notices for this zoning, rezoning request, we received two responses in favor and zero in opposition. Staff recommended approval of this request because it did comply with the future land use map, the thoroughfare plan, and it meets the intent of the GR rezoning uses. Planning and zoning commission made a positive recommendation seven to one at its meeting on May 7th, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about this case.
Thank you, Ms. Spear. Council, questions on the zoning request? If being none, open the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak before the council on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed, council, your pleasure, item 10.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second for approval of the zoning change from two-family dwelling district to general retail, there's no further discussion, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye. Ms. Spear, you're off the hook.
Thank you, I'll see you all in a minute.
Aye, take care, good to see you. Item 11 is first reading in a public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance authorizing amendments to the tax increment financing reinvestment zone, number one, financing and project plan as follows. A is approximating, excuse me, appropriating $30,000 to the Pepper Creek Trail connection to the Scott and White Health Plan Building, existing trail project, and recognizing $30,000 in revenue from additional property taxes received in fiscal year 2012. Item B is appropriating $385,000 to the TMed First Street at Loop 363 project, and recognizing $250,000 in revenue from Key Temple Beautiful's Governor Award Grant, and recognizing $135,000 in revenue from additional property taxes received in fiscal year 2012. And C is appropriating $50,000 to the I-35 Gateway project, and recognizing $50,000 in revenue from additional property taxes received in fiscal year 2012. Ms. Bernard?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council, as I said earlier in the work session, I think the agenda narrative pretty well explains what's being done, but I do have a table that summarizes the total amount appropriated from unrecognized increment taxes, it's 215,000, and we recognize the 250,000 from the KTD grant, that totals 465,000, and then I have a table that allocates or shows that to each project, I'd be happy to answer reading questions. Also, the, quickly, the reinvestment zone board did approve this amendment on May 23rd, 2012, at their meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Council, any questions on this modification of the tax increment financing reinvestment zone number one? No questions, this item requires a public hearing, I'll declare the public hearing open at this time, anyone wishing to speak before the council on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments. Do your scouts want to get up and ask about this? Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed, council, your pleasure, first reading on this amendment to the reinvestment zone plan.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion a second, further discussion? If being none, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for being with us this evening, this concludes the agenda for tonight's meeting, enjoy the rain, have a good evening.